Six o'clock, I'll call to order the regular council meeting, city of Boavick. Shannon Rocco. Here, please stand for flag allegiance.
Flag allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God.
Item four, agenda approval, this includes any consent agenda items you wish to be pulled. We will add that as six A. Any other changes? We have a motion by Councilor Neme, second by Councilor Berg to approve the agenda, any discussion? All in favor, I oppose, motion carries, consent agenda. Routine items to be approved? I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda. There's a motion and second to approve the consent agenda, any discussion? All in favor? Yes, three, there's a three year, three? Two. One full year. Any more discussion? All in favor? Oppose, motion carries, item six, consent agenda items, six eight, Councilor Neme requested the amenities committee or report people.
Okay, under the pavilion, the second bullet. It says the door locks still need replacing, the north parking lot doors require this side, yes, this side to keep them open and kitchen keys are obsolete and unable to copy. It recommends that the replacement of kitchen lock and installation of key fob access. I already found the zip locks are there, but I would like the council to direct Jeff to take care of this, these locks on the doors in the kitchen. It's been since August of September and the amenities report and has been done, I'd like to, I recommend that the council recommend Jeff to take care of this. Yeah, you're talking about upgrade actually. Replace the door lock.
But with the, with the current mechanical piece or with the upgrade? But to, to do the upgrade is probably quite expensive to do within that timeframe. But to replace that door in kind as it is. Would be doable within that timeframe, still a decent amount of money. We can get the crash bar fixed and get new keys and new lock sets, but we wouldn't be able to switch to key fob system.
If they're not looking.
The, the, the option would be to replace it with what's in, what's there already. Key, a key, a metal key that you could sublock it, all that stuff, replace that. Or replace that with an updated key fob system where you're not using.
Okay, what do you recommend?
And so Mayor and Council, and I don't want to, I don't want to make your motion for you or change your, your motion too much. Um, but we could get the, the lock company of this or Gilbert Glass door for, I have an opinion, can, can you make this work? The internals and the crash bar that are either worn out or stripped up, can you make this work? And then also get ready to get bids or quotes from the vendors that do the key fob system.
Are you saying?
And if, and if.
Black, black. Get the lock refurbished, okay, get them working and then get investment for your lock, for the whole city.
Yes. And it is possible that either this lock or Gilbert Glass door come over and take a look at it and say, there's nothing we can do here. Like they want certain. To replace it in kind, inviting one for four grand or five grand, what's the best going to be, that's the problem. But we don't know until they're helping us do it.
Okay, I, I personally think this needs to be taken care of, I don't mind the suggestion of having refurbished if they can. We need to get them fixed and that's, that's just my opinion, one comment, right, I don't know how the other comes.
Well, I would say at least get it inspected, looked at and fixed for the time being, and then we can also later on do the better upgrades to them, so this, get them working.
I would agree that we need to get the, the door fixed so we're not tying up the zip ties. And definitely as a part of our, looking at our city buildings, um, that we're, we're going to pick a bigger picture item on, on the fob access, that's rather expensive, so. But, so by general consent, I will, uh, direct the administrator to look into getting the door fixed and start the process on a citywide fob access. I'll need a motion to file the amenities report. We have a motion and second to file the amenities report with the consent agenda, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Oppose, motion carries. Item seven, presentations, Matt Reed. You come up, can you please hit the green button?
How's that? Working? This is kind of nice having a new podium that actually does follow over. Um, good evening, everyone. So I, I guess my, the purpose of my discussion tonight is to talk about the upcoming citywide reconstruction phase six project. There are some agenda items a little bit far up and down, and that's what this is really pertaining to. So there's a couple of things on the docket for tonight for consideration. First thing is our, the plans and specifications are done, we've been working with the county, they are, um, they are the city sponsors. Since you are not a state aid eligible city, in other words, you have a population less than 5,000, the county sponsors you in some of these grant. Processes where you get some grant money and, uh, to administer a project, county has to be involved. So we've been coordinating directly with them on this project since you do have some of that funding. And they are ready to go, pretty darn close to advertising, they just need a couple of things from us. One, they need authorization from the city council to move ahead. So one of, one of the items tonight is to consider approving the plans and specs or accepting the plans and specs and authorizing advertising for bids. If we get that, we'll work at getting the project out for bids here in the next week or two. Take bids probably sometime around, hopefully in time for the February meeting and we can bring them back and, and see where we end up as far as that goes. And as a reminder, that's, this is for First Street North from First Avenue to Fifth Avenue. And from, and Fifth Avenue North from Main Street to Fourth Street. That's the project that we're referring to here. The other thing that the county needs from us, actually the county doesn't, state aid needs it. So when you design, when you, certain types of funding require us to design to certain standards for various reasons. And one of the things that, in this case, we have to design to state aid standards. I don't want to get into all of the details of why this, what that all means, I'll answer questions certainly, have them. But the long and the short of it is, little history lesson, back a couple of years ago, few years ago now, when we started into the citywide, uh, street infrastructure program. City adopted a standard for the city for all of our east-west streets to be thirty-two feet wide. Curve based to curve face. All of the north-south avenues are basic curve face, thirty-six feet wide. So that's what's been constructed throughout town over the last several years. And that's what we're continuing to do, what we're putting together, this, this on this project. That allows for enough room for two lane traffic, parking on one side of the road. Guys generally have calendar parking in the winter time, that's not a problem, in the summertime, if you go around and people are parked on both sides, it gets a little tight. Uh, but not a lot of traffic on the city streets, so it's usually works okay. For state aid standards, that doesn't, they want to make sure that there's flow of traffic and everything that, that happen. And that's just, that's just how, uh, what we have to abide by. So we've got a few different options, of course, we could say no parking, which I don't think anybody wants to do that. We could say you're only going to park on one side year round, we park one side of the road, no parking, we've got our two lanes and a park. Or we could consider going to year round calendar park on those streets. Allow, that would meet the intent of the state aid standard and you'd be able to put, put that. So Jeff and I visited about it a little bit, and I guess that is the recommendation that, as your engineer I would bring forward. It seems to be the least intrusive, at least in my mind, because the, the public's already familiar with that policy, they do it six months out of the year anyway. So you could, um, you could handle it that way, or if you have a different way, by all means. But that's, I was just trying to figure out what would be the easiest here to accommodate, um, the requirements of state aid as well as not make it incredibly intrusive to the, to the public. So if that's the direction we, I just need something tonight, if possible, I need something tonight, um, addressing that situation so that I, you know, in the form of a resolution that I can get back to the state aid, so they'll sign on. So, uh, that's the second thing. And maybe I'll stop there before I dock what anything else, to see if anybody gets questions first, or I got one other thing I need to discuss, but I'll stop there.
Is, so is that for First Street or for the app? For the state aid, the park, both, that's all? That was just curious, how would that line up with existing First Street? It's like now, it's, it's First Street from Fifth Avenue, Eighth Avenue, how would that sign and then how would it tie in together? So that would, because people are going to park, probably they're going to want to park, you know? And even if it's calendar parking year round, are people going to abide by it? And, you know, that's, that was my own question.
It'll, it'll line, it'll line up better than it does now, it's, it'll line up straight now, so it should work, yeah. And truth be told, for the purposes of this exercise to get, to get, to meet the intent, you wouldn't even have to put calendar parking or do anything with, anything other than the limits of this project. So if you chose to just go for, take First Street and just put this limitation from First Avenue to Fifth Avenue, you could do that. The rest of First Street could stay just the way it is now, if you want. So it's, it's, it's completely up to you how you want to handle it. The bottom line is they, what state aid is looking at is they don't want to see cars parked on both sides with a, with a lane too narrow to work. So, and, and typically those standards are set up for a little bit higher volume roads. City of Boavick has relatively low volume roads. That said, these are the standards we have to abide by in order to get the funding. So we could certainly widen all the streets and get parking on both sides full time, but I don't know that that's the direction we want, so.
How much did that increase the project cost by?
Quite, all the way, quite a bit, I'd say by twenty percent. There's no more questions. Okay, so then the, the third part of this discussion is, we had taught, we had gone through the process when we started out down this path, um, we were following the chapter four twenty-nine special assessment process. We had a public hearing, I think it was in July of twenty twenty-three, Ju- July of twenty twenty-three, so a little over a year ago, year and a half ago. The statute reads that unless we state differently in the resolution, that if you don't have the project, alter bids or award it within a year of the public hearing, you've got to go back and give the public. So if the, if the plan is still to move ahead with the, potentially with the assessment process like we've done on other phases, then I would recommend we go ahead and get the advertising going, but then just try to set a special or a schedule of public hearing to have another public hearing to meet that intent of, of the chapter four twenty-nine process. We could do that concurrently, but just as long as we set that public hearing, have the public hearing get the input prior to awarding the project. If by chance there's no appetite for going down the process of assessments on this project, then you would extra step of having a public hearing. But just recognize that if, if that's the direction that we had, and that whatever is, is totally fine with me. Once, if we don't follow the process, we cannot, at the end of the project, we will not. So that's the only other consideration for tonight that, yet, if we think we may want to consider that path, we should try to come up with a date where we can have a public hearing sometime between now and the February meeting, if possible, to just present the project, to present all the revised costs.
Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong, we did, had no intention of doing the assessment, but we were following the process just in case we had to?
Uh, correct, uh, Mayor and Council, the, the council did, we did go through the statute four twenty-nine process to that point, because you can't, you can't go back and do it. So we had to do that. Um, there wasn't a formal decision made, uh, but the general conversation that all consensus was, um, because so many of these properties have an existing special assessment from previous states. And then generally assessed based on linear footage from letting the property. Uh, in this case, a big chunk of that linear footage is city property. The block that the building's on, so before you did the assessment, you subtract out city footage and the rest would be left over. At the end of the day, the, the amount assessed against the properties would probably not be enough to take forward that, that process. You got to go through all that process, you got to check up additional assessment, uh, then you got to track it for twenty years, depending if they cover the property. So, um, you know, a little bit of hesitation that it's something we might regret not doing it, but maybe one percent. I believe it was pretty well understood that it wasn't.
That was.
Okay, the only other thing I might add to that is just as a reminder that we do have one point four million in grants from the bonding bill. And nine hundred twenty-six dollars in addition to that from another direct location from, so. Two point. And two fifty, so we've got almost. So as of right now, we've got a whole two and a half million. So, pretty. And it's difficult, to be honest on this, not a lot of people, so. So. If, if necessarily has any question.
Now I might be jumping at, wouldn't it be confusing for the citizens if you only had half of First Street calendar parking and the rest doing what they want? And the other question I have is, is it possible that instead of state, I just think they have this one, instead of counter parking, just have one side where it's parked and the other.
Yep, certainly could do that. And, and to your first question, yes, I would necessarily recommend something different, a half of which. Could be done if you didn't want to restrict it.
Thanks, Matt, appreciate it. Okay, we'll move on to number eight, Mayor and Council member reports, uh, Councilor Berg.
The pity this month, Jeff, you told me January eleventh, you don't have any more phone calls at home about the logging truck that's in the neighborhood because of the forty days or the. That's the date? Thank you. Uh, in two months ago, we, the, the, the council directed the, the city to, to take care of two resident issues. One with the brush pile, the other was the deflectors, et cetera, city property. I haven't heard a word, so I'm assuming both of those take care. You don't know if the brush pile is big there? I haven't been down, right, I don't, I'm just, I haven't heard a word, negative, positive, I'm assuming both residents are happy and city. Two months ago, let somebody know right or wrong. One more thing, when we grant the liquor license, is there a certain number of months that has to happen before we serve up here? Or before it gets rejected? I mean, it's been like eighteen months we granted a liquor license, I haven't heard a word, negative or positive. Back in the day when we used to have nine, ten, eleven liquor places, it might have had an issue, now we don't have it. Does it just sit there? Or, or do we have to make a motion to deny it? I mean, we've approved European cuisine about eight months ago, but I've heard nothing. So I, I don't know, I, does it just sit there forever? City council granted, right? Why did we go, what, why did we go through the motion to do it? What I'm seeing is, do we have to take that back? I, I don't know, I, I just. So it's over?
And there, just ask us, we may come up with this in future. Mayor and Council, we, we may want to just fully put that, 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 the, the, the council made a motion approving that, that, uh, liquor license. They haven't done anything, so if they come in tomorrow morning and fill that out, I don't know if that's valid, if they come in, um, in the middle of July and fill it out, the motion was there, I don't know what it's on security.
But I'm asking, I, I don't know what happens in the past, what we've done, I just know, I've never eaten a European pizza.
Guarantee you never will.
Just ask it, I, I don't know.
We approved the city portion of it, but they never followed through with the alcohol gambling enforcement. So if we have to, I don't think we have to rescind it, it just didn't, it was contingent on their, uh, following through with the rest of their process, which they did not do, and, uh, without getting into too much, uh, they won't be doing any sort of business. Is that something we can do for the next?
Maybe you should put it in February, that's why I asked, is there a time break? And, and from what I've heard so far, there is no time.
Yeah, I think, although, I mean, highly unlikely that it would happen, but if they, if they come in tomorrow morning and say, hey, we're prepared to fill it out, and I don't know the week it's that.
I can personally assure you that that is not.
Right, and it's, I mean, very, very unlikely that it happens.
But I just asked, it's gonna happen, back in the day, it was, what did you, what the license? So we have many days, we don't have many days.
Is that all, Council?
That's it. Uh, I got really nothing, just want to thank the public for voting me in and hoping I can do what they wanted me to do and make some improvements of it.
Thank you, Councilor, Councilor Neme.
No, I don't have any.
Um, I'll keep mine quick, as we're, uh, kind of turning over tonight, I do want to welcome, uh, Councilor Lehman to the council and welcome back Councilor Berg. Real quick, I do, uh, I know it's going to be kind of, take some time to getting used to turning on and off the mics, uh, but we'll get there. We, we didn't buy the, the ninety thousand dollar system, so we wouldn't have to do that, so, and I'm perfectly okay with that. Uh, I do have some, um, expectations of starting on time. I do have some expectations of, if you're going to address the council, please come to the podium. You know, if we're unsure of who you are, state your name for the record, but I don't think we need to go through the, uh, address process, we're, we're a little bit small for that, which is good. And I do, uh, I do have an expectation that there will not be chatter in the audience, I appreciate everybody back in the. So, uh, the only things I have is that I know that recycling has been a very enormous issue, um, to everybody in town. And that is, I'd like to say that that's not to our fault, that is being worked on with law enforcement and with the county. So, uh, we as a city do not operate recycling, we just happen to have bins that are operated by county environmental services on city property. So, um, just so everybody's aware of that process and that is being worked on and. Uh, one of the things I was in a strategic plan, um, and I think is, is needed is coming up is possibly doing a town hall style, uh, meeting and input, hopefully, uh, in early spring here, and doing something at the pavilion, similar to when we had the, uh, town hall type discussion regarding police services. So that, yeah, that is potentially coming up, uh, administrator and I are looking into possibly, uh, you know, using Nordspan or somebody to facilitate that meeting, uh, as they are professionally good at that. But, so more to follow on that, and the, uh. And the. The only other thing I've got is, and I told this to just about everybody I've talked to, 2025 has already started, so we're done. I don't want to make decisions that are affecting 2025 anymore. I want to look to 2030 and 2035 and how that's going to affect our community in the long run. And that's what I ran on and continue to follow through with that. Yeah, so with that, we will move on. Item nine, old business. There is none. We will move on to new business. Item 10A, Resolution 2025-2 to set ambulance rates. This was in your packet. There are some adjustments. Like to see a motion to. Approve the. 2025. That's true. I was just leaving on. Battery search.
I'll save on batteries.
We do have a motion to approve the resolution. Wait a second. I will second the motion.
And Mayor and Council, just a quick point of information. So these are incremental increases to try to keep up. One of the things that we continue to work on is the nature of the end runs building. These are our set rates for a very large percentage of the runs that we go on. The rate is determined by the payer, not the, that they will be being better around. So one of the issues that we continue to work on and that I know is going to be a hot topic. The legislature gives increasing those Medicare reimbursements. It'd be much better for us financially if these were the rates that we receive for all the runs we, that our crew goes on. The reality is that we receive.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none.
Hi. Hi.
Right. Resolution passes. Item 10B, Resolution Appointing Planning and Zoning Commission Members. So our. Planning Commission, everybody. Had requested to re-up. We've kind of gotten into a bit of a. Everybody expiring at once, which doesn't happen very often and shouldn't again. So in the resolution in front of you, it does state. Terms expiring in different years. And we had a letter of interest from Mary Riley to fill the. Zoning Commission seat vacated by Chris Wykamp. Motion by Counselor Burke, second by Counselor Nimi to approve Resolution 25-3. Is there any discussion? And I would like to thank Chris Wykamp for her time served. There's no more discussion. Shannon, can you roll call?
Hi.
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 Hi. Motion passes. Resolution is approved. Resolution 2025-4, Approving Plans and Specifications in Ordering Advertisement for Citywide Reconstruction Phase Six. Everybody was presented with that information. They have a motion by Counselor Burke, seconded by Counselor Lehman to approve 2025-4. Is there any discussion?
I just have a question. When you said 2.5, so we got to, the city's got to come up with 76.
The estimate that you have is construction and contingency. There's some other project costs involved. That said, these are still estimates. We'll have to wait and see what the bids come in at, but the short answer is yes, the city will have to come up with some. Unless they come in really good, which we could cross our fingers for, the city will likely have to come up with some share for the property.
Is there any more discussion? John, you got to go to the podium. I think Matt's got the answer for that.
Yeah, so Mayor and Council, so there was, several years ago, there was money put aside by the, by the legislature for St. Louis County. To do a reconnect of. So completely, but the Whiskey Road. When County Route 715 was obliterated, they knew that they, they had planned on doing a reconnect. Highway four moving to downtown, and that was in there for a decade or more. They had for several meetings that, that project was deemed unnecessary. Nobody was looking. So of that money, there was 1.5 million that was transferred to the city of Boabik where you saw there. Million of that went to. Main Street, our city's portion of Main Street. That project, I don't know if that's money from some previous street projects, but there is. A thousand that was set aside for street budgets. There's, the short answer to this question is that there is money remaining from that. For. Or the language is for Boabik.
Do you get that, John? Any, any more discussion? Seeing none. Shannon, can you roll call?
Hi.
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 Hi. Resolution passes. Item 10D, Resolution 2025-5, Establishing Provisions for the Parking of Vehicles in the City of Boabik.
And Mayor and Council without a whole lot of time for, you know, discussion or anything with, with the council before drafting this resolution. Put in there as a suggestion. It would be a change after the. Matt Reed. So the, the change that's written in this resolution is that we would just have to own a parking year round up there. That would be the state aid standards. Having one set of rules on First Street from first to fifth and a different from fifth to eighth sounds really problematic. There are occasionally issues and questions about the parking on First Street. Keep in mind, First Street is the. The free rundown. You know, the, whether it's a official detour or just people going through there, not stopping at stop signs or blocks. It's a nice rundown there. But if you've got vehicles parked on both sides, boats like that aren't there, it can be problematic. Sometimes, so we'll cover the issues. Just by this one change. I would say that there will definitely be, not everyone will like that. There will be some concerns, whether it's money drop downs or not. 100% make everybody happy that there are backs, but the advantage of it is, as I said, it'll meet the, it'll meet the requirements. It'll be uniform at least for that full run of First Street, then it'll deviate some of those other concerns or complaints we've had of parking. Do we have to set that tonight? Or are we just approving it so we can get the stadium and get the everything rolling and then like later on, set like parking on one side or the other side? Or let's set this and set. Nope, you could do that. You start with whatever the changes you'd have to meet those state aid, but it comes out that, no, we just want to make the. Make the south side and the east side no parking, only park on one side. You'd be able to change it to that.
I will support that. Is there any discussion?
And Mayor and Council, I think that warrants real discussion coming here. The other thing, a big topic from last year. We've got that in the streets we've been out and I'm using frequently, and that's, that's a real common rationale for year-round calendar parking in summer meetings. Big cracks or stuff like that. So that would be another advantage to that. Winding through those streets. Again, not going to make everybody happy. It's not going to be universally loved, but definitely warrants.
I don't want to get too far into the weeds on, it's not part of the, this resolution, but I think that that is a absolutely fantastic idea. Probably. I mean, we do have a motion and, wait a second. Approving the resolution as presented, which does state the first and fifth calendar parking year round. I think that, I think Counselor Burke is right. We will leave a lot of the issues that we continue to discuss. Always come back and revisit this. Possibly sooner than later. But there's any more discussion on the resolution? Hearing none. Shannon, roll call, please.
Hey. Hi.
Hi. Resolution passes. Item 10E, Resolution 2025-6, Operating a Grant Application to the IRRV Public Works Grant Program. Your packets, you'll see that this is a public works grant for the phase six of the citywide reconstruction projects.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, so the citywide reconstruction, for several years now, we've been on tracks of designing the project, keeping the project taken care of. With our engineer while also exploring all that and some funding and going after that with our, with our engineering firm. This one has been kind of unique. We're able to. To get the 1.4 million dollars out of state appropriation, the 926,000 dollars out of a federal appropriation. Through some lobbying efforts and some. Joint efforts with our, with the engineering firm, and then we're able to leverage that with a $250,000 grant from IRR. That's been awarded and at an earlier meeting, former Mayor Wykamp and I. Current Commissioner, who encouraged us to definitely go after additional grant funding. Following the IRRR grant, grant cycle and the grant awards for the past, several years and in the past year. Increasing grant awards for a project that's already been awarded has been done frequently at IRRR, so we will be looking at that. There's some grant funding for, for this project.
We have a motion by Counselor Burke, seconded by Counselor Nimi to approve Resolution 2025-6. Is there any more discussion? All in favor, or I'm sorry, roll call Shannon. Hi. Resolution passes. Moving on to item 10F, Approval of Updated Stipend Rates for Fire and Ambulance Personnel.
And Mayor and Council, again, these are incremental increases in the, in these fees. The ambulance fund is offered as enterprise fund, self-sustaining fund. These were accounted for in the budget.
Motion by Counselor Nimi, seconded by Counselor Burke to approve the updated stipend rates. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Hi.
Motion carries.
Hey Larry, can I even vote on that? Oh, same. Yeah, I was thinking about it.
Good catch. Motion carries. Item 10G, Approval of Fire and EMS Department Hire and Care Committee Interview Paige Nelson on December 30th. As for EMT position and is recommending that she.
So move.
Move by Counselor Burke, supported by Counselor Nimi to approve the hire. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? I oppose. Motion carries. Item 10H, Accept Resignation from the Fire and Ambulance Department. Jason Lottie has submitted a written resignation from the. We have a motion and second to accept the resignation. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Oppose. Carries. Approval of Fire Equipment Service Test Agreement by your.
You ever seen?
Chief Mack, I didn't have a. Equipment service test. Did I just see maybe on your desk? So do we want to just postpone this until February? I'll make motion to postpone until February. Have motion and second to postpone this until February meeting, any discussion? All in favor? I oppose. Motion carries. Action on Boabik Camp Drone Operations. The Administer's Coordinator, City Administrator, Camp Drone Liaison, Undiscussed Rate Changes and Dates. Recommend that we approve this. Move by Counselor Burke, supported by Counselor Nimi to. To approve the rate changes. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Hi.
I oppose. Motion carries. Item 10K, Approval of Letters of Support for Tona White Grant Application. Everybody can see there. Looking for. Regional letters of support for heading to the trail system. Does not affect the city of Boabik, but it's a neighboring community and does connect to our trail system and gets to part of our regional. Both move by Counselor Nimi, supported by Counselor Lehman to approve letter of support. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Oppose. Motion carries. Item 10L, Approve Ambulance Purchase. Everything is in your packets. The, the ambulance fund supports this new purchase. For anybody that is unaware, our current unit one is out of service, probably will be forever. It's also nearly 20 years old. And it should have been replaced a long time ago, so they are requesting the proposal of new ambulance, which is, I believe, the lead time was May of 26.
And it's, it's increasing. Yeah, the ambulance fund has the, has the funds currently to purchase this, but the actual payment, of course, isn't due till delivery. The ambulance fund has the dollar. The ambulance fund has the dollars in it today.
I will support.
Took you twice for. Sorry, Chief.
There is a motion and a second to approve the ambulance purchase. Is there any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor. I oppose. Motion carries. Item 10M, consideration of proposal of fire engine. And as everybody noticed that there is, they were both on the same quote, but as Chief Mackey can say, the, uh, was the reason if, if we were to purchase two pieces of equipment at the same time, there'd be somewhat of a discount. To bring awareness to the situation we are in with our fire trucks. Chief Mackey, if you want to fill us in.
Yeah, the, uh, so the proposal itself is about $40,000 difference than if you buy separately. Uh, the fire truck, it's engine one, uh, it's our primary engine. It's a 1990. We had a similar truck. That was a 1989, almost identical. It had some issues. It went down in 2017. So we were able to get the quint to replace that in 2021. At the time when we went through that discussion, that same spec fire truck was 680,000. So I wanted to bring awareness to aid. Five years later, it's almost done. And the biggest thing we've struggled with is some of the components on the truck, differentials leaking, transmission is leaking. We had the truck down for about a year, uh, working through a transmission problem that ended up being the throttle. And you can't get the throttle cable we have anymore. So, um, our service support technician, um, came up with something on his own to make it work. Doesn't, uh, doesn't quite work the way it's intended, but does get some plenty of still now. So that's, I mean, that's the gist of it is the continued cost, kind of what we're staring down. In terms of how much more money do you put into that truck? It's 34 years old, coming up to five years old. There's some other points on the truck that, uh, it's an open cab that standard changed in 1991, the 90. So there's definitely some other things to consider as far as updating. Cost and safety. Quite frankly, just an update, reliable because of that apparatus. That's kind of the skinny and open to questions, of course, some.
Counselor, question?
I would put it in that building over there.
Do you mean physical dimensions?
No, 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 not dimensions. Building is older than, uh, I'm not, I'm not being negative, I'm just saying.
Just creating a visual reference.
I wouldn't want to park a new truck in there.
So I definitely don't disagree with your logic. I, I, I kind of go back and forth. Do you get the new fire hall at some point in time or take care of the building situation, we'll see. But all the equipment you're going to put in it is grown.
And Mayor and Council, they, they mentioned some stuff earlier about working with their engineer and funding. We do currently have, there was a billion dollar appropriation for the city of Boawick. Some of the preliminary work for new public safety building, uh, in the last legislative session. They're gearing up for another legislative session right now. Bonding is a hot topic as we're going into that. And we've got some stuff in the works with, uh, with our engineering firm to go after additional bonding dollars for, for. The Counselor Berg said it's, it's in rough shape. It's, I'm not going to mention the age of it, but it's, it's it is definitely in need of replacement and that is something that's, you know, we've got our.
Yeah, one other piece kind of in reference to that buildings as we travel that process, whatever that might look like. That would be actually one of my concerns is what you brought up. Are you really going to be able to talk about replacing a piece of fire apparatus? And you're going to get some dollars, that's cool, right? But that's also going to be a pretty good cost. So now you have a 40-year-old.
So what was the delivery time on this?
32 to 35 months. And that actually improved just based on the truck specification that we worked on. I wouldn't say it's watered down, but it was pre-basically understood our needs, our calendar. So to speak. So because of the lower amount of oxygen content, they moved it into a depressional line if you will. Because it's a lot more simple, straightforward, standard build. Is originally like 42 to 45. But yeah, three years. I'm thinking long-term, like 2028.
And I appreciate that. And that is a 35-year investment also.
And I think at some point talking a little bit into the future is the longer we wait on this one. The other fire apparatus that we have, 75 to 55, I would fully anticipate we're going to buy different pieces of equipment at some point, a little bit more investigation. Probably take some more money or I would dump off some fixing it. But the longer we wait on this one, the closer those two get together. To the point, I'd say you got about 10 if years before you're going to have to consider something there. Piece of apparatus, so seems like a long time, but if you ordered this today, three years, that's only seven.
And Mayor, Mayor and Council, this, this, so this is on the agenda of the discussion item tonight. Partially because this is a pretty big project, pretty big decision. We have not gone through this process, I think since oh seven, we have not gone through this process in my time. So it's going to be kind of, uh, you know, blazing new trails here. So it's a discussion item, but I'd like to get some feedback on the council on what you want to see as a step. I don't want the, uh, generally this involves some kind of a, a truck committee or something like from the department. Don't want to have them sit down and get their committee together and have. Doesn't want to see it or doesn't want them forward with that. Be nice to have some consensus on, do we want to, want to get a committee together? Do you want the department to come back and support the savings? There's other financing and grant stuff that I can add to that, but that apparently the council is going to want to see. But it's quite a bit of legwork to be done on that. Staff in the department should, should have some consensus from the council of what he wants.
I'll talk a little bit on purchasing process. So the proposal you have in front of you for both the ambulance and the fire truck separately. They have two different systems or that one's called SAVI, one's called HVC. There's different consortium group purchasing plans. Um, those are all pre-bid, so every vendor comes into a system and puts their bid in. So that's what allows us to follow the rules of municipal purchasing. But you actually go through and sit down with someone, like, okay, here's what you want. Pass that. That pricing comes out and it's available publicly, uh, through the, through the consortium for group, group purchasing programs. So that's kind of what you see, like probably saw the bilingo on the ambulance proposal with SAVI. What that means or what that is. Mechanism of what you purchase up. Same thing for HVC or so small for a fire truck. Some of you guys. So that's, that's a legwork. We have had a couple of truck committees over the years. This process actually started. It didn't make very far, but Jeff's alone, I don't think that that was, there was no communication with all of that. So we've kicked it up a couple of times since then. This is, yeah, kind of a wrap. Have some correction.
I don't want to be talking five years from now about our 39-year-old truck and the price of a new one being two and a half million dollars. Just kind of where we're at from last time around. I know that much. I don't necessarily have the answer today. Maybe.
On your, on your pricing, uh, increases, the industry saw one and a half, two percent quarter. Six percent, six, eight percent annually. Just rock nap in the next two years. We just let it sit, it would be from the 1.22 price to 38. 170, 170 grand. Same problem. But that's up these book, the industry has the last four years.
I thought it, that we need to move forward on this. Yeah, there's a connection with it is as Counselor, I'd like to know about money available. I want to grant any other type of money that's available, not just for the fire truck, but for the fire hall. I'm thinking we're missing out on some stuff and we need to be applying for this. Help pay for this. You got 32 to 35 months, but I, I agree if we keep waiting, prices will go up. And I already know what's happened to this fire truck and I'm not an expert on it, I figured it out. As to how to do it, I'm really not sure. I don't know if you need a council workshop or we just direct, uh, city administrator, R G C. Fire workers to see, I don't know, I don't have.
So a little bit of information in your question. Submitted proceeded earlier, we did two and we broke. Which were unsuccessful in the last attempt, hence we're, we're here with the head of the city. Tried the same program. It's called Assistant Firefighter Grants. Jeff has been a very immersive man in the last five years. Been successful on one. And it's a highly competitive. There's about 300, 350 million available nationwide. The award thousand awards, 12,000. Vehicle portion of it, there's, there's a set criteria, I'll probably break it down. How much can go to vehicles, how many people vehicles, so it's very much split up. And we, so we have had two failed applications or unsuccessful, I should say. We have one pending right now. I can't speak to what neighboring communities put the grant in and then they moved forward on it. The plan, okay, we're going to have to figure out how to pay for it, but they put in for the grant. If they got the grant, of course, that pays a considerable chunk. If they didn't, they have one. That's right. Now we do have one application in for, uh, this fire apparatus engine. The MAX award for some reference is a million dollars. So even that program. Our program has been very, very challenging, very competitive. Just so you're aware of the yard, we definitely have.
Yeah, I was just going to ask Jeff. I guess we do have a few other time to figure out money-wise, but 1.4 million, a lot of city. We're going to be able to have that money available. And plus say if we have other additional issues with so, so on this truck, there, there's basically two, two potential sources of funding with these minor ones. The big one would be this, the FEMA AP grant and that would be that would be the, the by far the greatest thing that 95,5 back, you get the truck. Cap sort of at a millions, we're still looking at a decent chunk or we got to pay for the whole thing. Not a whole lot of other grants out there, just one vehicle. So we're looking at either trying to come up with 5% of the 1.2 million. At that point, you can do some levy or the cap improvement, stuff like that. At 1.2 million or 1.4 million, whatever it comes in at, we're looking at coming up with that. We're most likely looking at a bonding, which is borrowing. So then what the council will need to see is what that bond schedule looks like. Going to be a decent amount, spread it out over 20, 30 years and look at those options. And we've got to, we only work with our funds, we've worked with our fund securities on our bonding since, at least since oh two, that's been voided treatment in. So we'd want to bring in those, bring in the whole Northland Securities go with the bonding and terms of like, but we're looking at significantly.
There is one other mechanism. Group PNC finance. A lease option, I mean, I certainly would get those and just turn them over to Jeff typically. The lease purchase option doesn't compete with a bond in terms of, it's just cheaper. Buying like, but certainly hold out, it will be 15 years leases. And I'll, I'll keep it that. It's just another option typically not a best one, but.
But I mean, uh, rough numbers on a bonding situation, we're going to bond for, you know, probably 1.4 million on, on 20 years. Looking at between 75 and 800. No, looking at single digit, single digit percent increase in the levy, not that.
Would anybody be opposed to, uh, coming up with maybe a truck task force? Or, we don't, just maybe a lot, but coming up with that. Exploring options to bring back to the council. We'll look into that, go that road and come back to the full council and, and as Counselor Nimi had suggested earlier. Probably going to be a, a workshop type situations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I got a question there. Are you going to play that?
Absolutely. Yes, absolutely.
I do think one of the projects.
I would agree with that as well. The, uh, obviously the administrator, Chief Mackey. And then Counselor slash two, two hats, I know, I know that feeling all too well. And I would also want to sit on that committee, or sorry, task force as well. If anybody has any other thoughts, but I mean, let me tell them. Adjust that. Just go with it.
And then Mayor and Council, just, just to add. Assuming it would be, you'd be okay with the chief and the officers internally selected and told that would be on public department. Say working with the same people and, and the chief would be able to pick.
And that will turn into that a council workshop probably near future. Say very near future, but near future. Open public forum, is there any? Open public forum, is there any comment from anybody in the public? If so, please head podium. Hit the little button there if you would, so we can hear.
Good meeting.
Thank you.
Second of all. It's other ones are wireless, somebody like me that's that. There's only a couple that really stand out. Bring your mics in a little bit closer. It'd be appreciated. Thank you.
Big square run on the bottom, John.
Probably go on any help. Well, Jeff, this main street toward the city council, why is it that we have to wait so long? Why?
Mayor and Council, the current wait is partially due to the, our policy actually states that the main street. That the sidewalks are the responsibility of the property owner, but have the courtesy. The public work crew will come back and do that as, as time allows. And that may for a few years. I believe it's time to update that, that. For a decent chunk of the sidewalk, the property owner, the city, give them a public space. But other than that, it's a, it does become. A safety concern and kind of a. Spring, the community can start booking for that, so. They, I will most likely be coming back with some suggestions on that policy. In the meantime, if there's no objection, I can set that policy aside a little bit, bump that up on the priority list. But I believe it should. Formalized.
Especially by the post office, that's the worst place of all. You know, between the post office and west up to the. Uncle Jim's bar right there. You go walk down the main street with the traffic going.
Which, which one was Uncle Jim's bar?
Over that father, over that father, Jack's father. All right, that's all I got to say.
Thanks, John, I will say, I did, I did email Jeff about this specific issue about a week and a half ago. And I just, we didn't get the snow and ice policy revision on this agenda tonight, but hopefully we'll have something. To remove the language of as a courtesy and I do think it's important that we as a city. Take care of our business districts and especially the people visiting those businesses. As I've had multiple complaints from people outside of the city as well. Saying, jeez, I can't even stop to get a pizza in your town because I can't get out of my car. So I did speak with the administrator on that, he should hopefully have that language for the, for the next. So, but I do think in the meantime, we should just get it taken care of.
And Mayor and Council, the other half of that equation, the equipment side of it, we have done some equipment. We've done an upgrade on the. The piece of, for the, for the tool cap that we use for moving nets, now there's smaller options available that we should probably look into equipment wise for. Salted sanding, we do a lot of things on those sidewalks, but that'll be, that'll be done in conjunction with that policy.
Okay, thank you. There's nothing.
Well, hello, I really appreciate what you had to say about looking to the future. Involving thirty years on, what have you, anything else, it's important that we look at that, especially when we consider everything going on around us. It might seem a little out of the ordinary, but technology is improving at such an incredible pace, we have to stay ahead of the game, otherwise we're going to be sitting here in the dark and it'll be a continuation of what we've seen for a long time. I grew up in a research community, a very long time ago, because, well, I'm mostly user of the target report, oh, wow. That besides, it's, there's a lot to consider moving forward and you really don't want to sit here in the dark and you really appreciate to see that. This is being considered and I love what you had to say by your chief. I said that right, I'm bad at words. Yes, I really like what you put forward. Above some kind of counselor, I expect for your research and everything, because I've been around grant writing and everything else and studying that, that's it. So there we go, semi keywords.
Thanks, Chris. If there's nothing else, everybody's favorite motion. I have a motion from Councilor Namie to adjourn, do I have a second? Support by Councilor Lehman. All in favor? Aye.